Good afternoon, welcome to the forty-seventh meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Apologies for the late start. We had a special meeting immediately preceding this matter. And we will move directly into our hearings calendar today. We will call a few out of order. I'm starting with agenda item number twenty, request number two-three.
You can just stay there and go to the left.
That's calling agenda item number twenty, request number two-three dash zero-three-nine, three-nine from James Lee on behalf.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Name is James Lee, representing KKM LLC DBA Kim Scott. Sitting to my right is Mr. Sam Shuno Kim, the owner and also the member.
So this is a request to waive the five-day rule, correct?
Correct.
And you, what was the, the business that was open previously?
Billion Pocher.
And you know when they closed or when their license?
Oh.
May fifth, twenty twenty-two.
May fifth, twenty-two. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners. Any questions, comments, or type of action?
I have no questions.
I move re-approve request number two-three dash zero-three-nine-three-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-three-nine-three-nine is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving back to the top of our calendar for special license applications, calling agenda item number one. Applications number two-three dash zero-two-nine-zero-eight dash one through two-three dash zero-two-nine-zero-eight dash two-seven. From Yarikuri Sushi LP.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Kevin E. Kovar is here, representing Yarikuri Sushi LP, doing business as Kan Sushi. Next to me is Kazu Kato, K-A-T-O. He is the general manager for Kan Sushi.
Good afternoon.
We are actually in the process of getting our, we've applied for the final license. Waiting on preliminary hearing and stuff. It's in the process, so this is a sort of a measure to keep things going.
Was this on at temp previously, or is this?
No, there was no liquor license previously, so we had to go this way.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
There's no outside seating. Everything's enclosed.
Everything is inside, yes.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Okay, I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-two-nine-zero-eight dash one through two-three dash zero-two-nine-zero-eight dash two-seven inclusive.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Applications number two-three dash zero-two-nine-zero-eight dash one through two-three dash zero-two-nine-zero-eight dash two-seven inclusively are approved. Very much.
Very much.
Calling agenda item number two, application number two-three dash zero-three-eight-seven-one from Memoirs LLC. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and the Board. My name is Taylor Passion. I'm the general manager of Memoirs LLC. Nothing for this event has changed since the submission.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
No one under twenty-one, right?
That is correct. No one under twenty-one will be at this event.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Okay, I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-three-eight-seven-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-three-eight-seven-one is approved. We are going to call out of order because it's the same applicant. Calling agenda item number seven. Application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight-six from Memoirs LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and the Board. I have submitted a withdrawal for the application of this event due to the violations of the venue. And we couldn't obtain the clearance for the zoning clearance, so we have pulled out of the bar services for this event.
Okay, so this application is withdrawn and no further actions necessary for agenda item number seven. Calling agenda item number eight, application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight-seven from Memoirs LLC.
Good evening, Commissioner and the Board. My name is Taylor Passion, representing Memoirs, General Manager. And nothing has changed for this event either. We are at fifty-seven guests and no minors.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight-seven is approved. Calling agenda item number nine, application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight-eight from Memoirs LLC.
Good evening, Commissioner and the Board. My name is Taylor Passion, representing Memoirs LLC, and I'm the general manager. For this event, again, nothing has changed. Seventy guests. No minors will be attending the events, and we do have shuttles delivering guests and taking them from property as well.
Thank you for that summary. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or type of action?
I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight-eight is approved.
Thank you very much.
Moving back to the top of our calendar, calling agenda item number three. Applications number two-three dash zero-three-nine-three-six dash one through two-three dash zero-three-nine-three-six dash two-zero inclusively from Hong Kong Inc.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I believe you've been provided a copy, the email correspondence from Council Keikiuchi, requesting that this matter be rescheduled to the July sixth meeting, please.
And is that date acceptable, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item number three is continued to the July sixth calendar date. Calling agenda item number four, application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-four-five from Waikiki Yacht Club. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Ron Gridley. I'm the Commodore for Waikiki Yacht Club. To my left is Dennis Caneely. He is the general manager. We submitted a request for a one-time special license because we are hosting the Great Trans-Pacific Race, which started out of L.A. yesterday, and our party is for the twelfth. The only thing that I think that I added, excuse me, was DLR did approve the request. We have that in the package, and I believe you have it in front of you. Standing by to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gridley. I have an individual here, which I believe is yourself, that would like to testify as to this matter. Is that correct?
I misunderstood. I'm here. I've got nothing else to say if you have any questions.
You can say as much as you want.
No, no, we're good. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or type of action?
Only one question, Mr. Gridley. If parking-wise, right, I mean, if you have some guests that are overconsumption, what is their, are they going to be able to park somewhere within the property overnight to leave their car if they need to, or how would that work?
Yeah, we do have parking at the club itself, and we do have additional security guards and HPD out front, so we're monitoring that to the staff as well. So if it comes to that situation, we'll put them in the parking lot and park them.
That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Okay, I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-four-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-four-five is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number five, application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-three from Bishop Museum.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Derek Stevens with Free Spirits LLC, authorized agent on behalf of Bishop Museum. There are no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Could you just briefly summarize the event for us?
So this is a continuation of the event that they held last year. It's going to be on the, it's held on the second Friday of each month. Members and guests come on alike, are able to come over, enjoy the museum, look at the exhibits. They have food vendors there, music, live music, and then we'll have the beer garden as well.
And the beer garden is separated from the rest of the campus?
What I did was I tried to continue the application that was on file previously, and they licensed pretty much the whole great lawn area.
But is there, is there any sort of a designated area for drinking, or is everyone free to roam about?
Free to roam about. There will be six security staff and twenty front-of-house staff roaming the campus grounds.
And how will you be doing security checks for IDs and?
At the bar itself, they're going to be checking for ID, and then we're going to ban everybody underage.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Well, just two quick questions. What is your security plan if your people catch someone within your space passing? Take care from whoever they're with to an underage person?
Typically, what they do is they confiscate the alcohol from the guests, and then they ask them to leave.
And then my last question will be if there is overconsumption, or there, someone is unable to drive, are they going to be able to leave their car at the parking lot of Bishop Museum, or is there, what is the plan in regards to that?
So security will allow them to leave their car there overnight, and so they can pick it up the next day. They just leave their information and contact and pull with the staff on, on campus and also the security.
Okay. Thank you. That's the only questions I have.
I have one question. What is the, what's the difference between the green dots? The entire space is going to be licensed, but then there's a ton of like green dots all over.
Those are just, I think those are just bushes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but yeah, those are bushes. So those areas are blocked out. You can't really walk in that area.
Got it. All right.
I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-three is approved. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Calling agenda item number six, applications number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-five dash one through two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-five dash two-three inclusively from J.J. Ku Hoi Ying.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Christina O'Hara on behalf of the applicant. To my left is Roger Mina. He's the food and beverage manager. And behind him is Liberty Lee, the GM for Honolulu Country Club. We have no changes to the investigative report. We would request that, to the extent the original application was filed in September of 2022, if the commission feels like waiving the fees here or decreasing them, we would, they would be greatly appreciated. They'd be about $6,000 in my estimation. Our original application was filed in September of 2022 again. But to the extent that's not possible, we do ask that we be refunded for the days we don't use if we end up getting our license before using all sixty-seven days.
Just as a point of order, Mr. Rai, if there are unused days, what is the general policy for refunding the days that are not used?
With commission approval, we can, we can refund. Sometimes applicants will ask that they be given credit towards future special licenses or what have you. So basically with commission approval, we can do a refund for unused days.
Thank you, Mr. Rai. Commissioners, what do you think about the requests and any other comments or questions?
Two items, I guess, just as discussion, approving the licensing is fine with me, and approving a refund of unused days are also fine with me as a discussion point.
Yeah, it's a discussion, but I'm fine with that. So I guess the motion would be to approve application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-five dash one through two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-five dash two-three inclusively with verbiage that the licensee would be able to come back and ask for a refund on days that were not used in that.
I think they, if they just identify, if you approve that concept, they just identify to us the number of unused days, and then we could take action on that, rather than make them come back.
Okay.
Okay.
Listen to. Identify the days if they're unused to the commission for refund. Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Applications number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-five dash one through two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-five dash two-three inclusively are approved with the added condition that any unused days within the days approved could be refunded to the applicant. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number ten, application number two-three dash zero-four-zero-zero-eight dash one through two-three dash zero-four-zero-zero-eight dash three-zero inclusively from Kahala Living Center Community Inc.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the Commission, Mr. Rai, Robert Uyoko on behalf of Kahala Nui. Presenting my right, Mr. Todd Constantino, who is the food and beverage director. At this time, we have no changes to the investigative report. We did file a club liquor license application in May 2022, and we have been operating under special liquor license since August 2022 with no problems.
Thank you very much, Mr. Uyoko. Commissioners?
I have no questions.
Okay. I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-four-zero-zero-eight dash one through two-three dash zero-four-zero-zero-eight dash three-zero inclusive.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Applications number two-three dash zero-four-zero-zero-eight dash one through two-three dash zero-four-zero-zero-eight dash three-zero inclusively are approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Moving into our preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number eleven, application number two-three dash zero-zero-seven-seven-six from One Jot Bishop Pantry Corporation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. To my right is the owner, Lang Zhi La Thao. She is president with council Wayne Luke. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
She has been operating the store without a license for about a year.
She's been operating the store without a license provided?
Yes, with the Pacific Guardian.
And the, the ink is a little faded, but it looks like the entire premises is outlined for the license area, is that correct? Thank you. Commissioner?
Only one double-door entrance, correct?
Yes. Double door.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-seven-seven-six.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-zero-seven-seven-six is approved. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number twelve, application number two-three dash zero-zero-eight-six-eight from Yoda LLC.
The owner of that living is president with council Wayne Luke. We have no changes to the investigative report, and he already is prepared for the warnings that he's going to get again.
That he has to talk like Yoda for the request? No, I'm kidding.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
I have no question.
Wow. I did that on purpose. I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-eight-six-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-zero-eight-six-eight is approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Calling agenda item number thirteen, application number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-six-five from Mr. Saint Grévar LLC. Good afternoon.
Gentlemen. Keston Johnson, representing Mr. Saint Grévar. No change to the investigation, preliminary hearing, and I've been working off of a special license since thirteen A.
Yes, good to see you again, and glad that you're at the preliminary hearing stage. Commissioners?
On the schematic plan, which side of the building has the entrance? Is that the bottom? It's closest to the elevator?
Correct. Facing the elevator, correct. That's the food court entrance.
Got it. Okay. That's the only question I have.
Okay, I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-six-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-zero-nine-six-five is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, application number two-three dash zero-one-three-zero-eight from Popular Human LLC.
And the member Kevin Young is president with council Wayne Luke. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Young. Commissioners?
So again, I'm assuming the ink is very faded, but I'm assuming it's the whole floor plan is red, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-one-three-zero-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-one-three-zero-eight is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number two-three dash zero-two-five-seven-six from MBR Y E LLC DBA Troy's Garden Korean Restaurant. Mr. Luke?
To my right is Peter Yim. He's going to be the general manager for the premises. He is president with council Wayne Luke. There are no changes to the investigative reports.
So this is a transfer application. The license is currently in safekeeping. Is that correct?
Yes, Troy's Garden. Thank you.
Commissioners?
All right, I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-two-five-seven-six.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-two-five-seven-six is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-two from HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Good afternoon, Robert Uyoko on behalf of HMS.
Go ahead.
Robert Uyoko on behalf of HMS Hosts, presenting my right, Mr. Christopher Cotto Hero. He is the senior director of operations. We have no changes to investigative reports. This is a temporary bar located in the new Malcom concourse. We did recently open the Malcom market. We were really excited about earlier this month. So this is an additional location to give travelers another option.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Uyoko. Commissioners?
I have no question.
I move re-approve application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two-three dash zero-three-nine-five-two is approved. Thank you very much. Moving into requests, calling agenda item number seventeen, Club Dance, Club Sundance Games.
Hello, we have a problem with insurance. Can we attend soon, please?
Excuse me?
Your name? Can you tell your name?
My name is Maaiang Yu.
Can you spell your name? Spell your name?
M-A-I-N-G-U-Y-E-N.
So your license is not currently in safekeeping?
No, because we have issue about insurance. That's why now we look for insurance, but they said wait for.
It was, the license was placed in safekeeping literally yesterday.
Okay.
Yes.
So the, the request is simply to renew while it's also placed in the safekeeping? Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
I move re-approve request number two-three dash zero-four-zero-six.
Does that require?
Wait, is that right?
Oh, it does, but it doesn't on the agenda item. Thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-four-zero-eight-six is approved. Thank you very much.
I can understand. We can open or we have to close totally?
You know, if you can, you can ask, you can tell the front counter that you got permission to renew and work out the, the details about getting your license out of safekeeping with them. The front counter, you have to ask the front counter, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number eighteen, request number two-three dash zero-three-nine-one-one from Hawaiian Pacific Restaurant Group, Inc.
Scott Armstrong. Where is restaurant? Waikai.
So this is to temporarily increase the premises for an event?
Not for event, but we run a table, two tables outside already, continuously since COVID.
I see.
Just waiting for, trying to seek permanent licensing for outside. I'm waiting on drawings.
I see. And so that outside is that thirty-four by seventeen by fifteen space that's outlined in red. Is that correct?
Yes, but we're not using the entire space. We used to use the other side with tables where we took them down. Because basically this is probably a small portion of it now.
I see. And is there any delineation of space, physical delineation of space outside, barriers or walls or anything like that to that space?
No barriers.
So just, just tables?
Just two tables under the tent.
Under the tent. Commissioners?
Okay, so I understand that there is nothing delineating the outside area. I would suggest or say, right, that if this request gets approved, please make sure that there's someone out there watching to make sure that if there is alcohol served out there, that no one's passing it or handing it off to someone walking around or sitting at their table, because we want to make sure there's no, you know,
Yeah, passing.
not the correct person drinking, okay? But I have no other request, questions in that. Thank you.
And it's less of a concern with table service, but if there's nothing to show where the license premises is, someone even mistakenly might move in or out of it by accident. That's something else you can be aware of.
Okay, I move re-approve request number two-three dash zero-three-nine-one-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-three-nine-one-one is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nineteen, request number two-three dash zero-four-zero-seven-four from KSLR LM LLC.
Good afternoon, Robert Uyoko on behalf of Outrigger Reef. It's definitely a request to proceed. Barbara Campbell was unable to be here today. She's the vice president of Outrigger Hospitality Group. She had, she had an unexpected conflict. We have no changes to investigative report. This involves a permanent reduction for the Monkey Pod by Merriman Restaurant coming up in Outrigger Reef. It's on the Makai side of the property. It's also with agenda item twenty-two. But this is for the permanent reduction of our hotel liquor license to allow for the restaurant space.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Uyoko.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
I move re-approve request number two-three dash zero-four-zero-seven-four.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two-three dash zero-four-zero-seven-four is approved.
Thank you so much.
Calling out of order, agenda item number twenty-two, requests from MPK Four LLC DBA Monkey Pod Kitchen by Merriman.
Robert Uyoko again, on behalf of Monkey Pod Kitchen by Merriman, presenting my right, Miss Sarah Hill. She is the chief executive officer of Handcrafted Restaurants. As I mentioned on previous items, this is for, I guess it's kind of modifications of our floor plans. I guess we included some staircases and some elevators, and it's like, so this cleans it up. Investigator Sato was very helpful in working with, with us on this, and we just have to tweak the floor plans a little bit. So we got new floor plans, eliminated some areas, and it is attached as an exhibit in investigative report.
Yes, you see that very much. Thank you very much. Commissioners?
And I move re-approve application number two-two dash two-four-zero-three-six.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections or reservations here, and seeing none, the motion carries. Application number two. Sorry, did I, did I also?
Two-two-two-four-zero.
No, did I, did I also? Did I also join in that motion?
I believe so.
Okay, well, I will join in that motion. Application number two-two dash two-four-zero-three-six is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, request number two-three dash zero-three-nine-six-eight from Kenneth Hu on behalf of Seven-Eleven, Y E Inc. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Kenneth Hu appearing for the applicant. This is a request to extend the deadline for the issuance of the license because of construction delays, getting permitting, and whatnot. So we ask for a one-year extension of the deadline.
And it's the one year based upon your expectation with the construction delays?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners?
I move we approve request number two three dash zero three nine six eight.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two three dash zero three nine six eight is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to move into our adjudication hearings, but before that, the Commission will take a brief recess. Okay, we are back on the record, thank you for allowing us time for a brief recess, we are going to now move into our adjudications. Mr. Jacob?
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Daniel Jacob, on behalf of the City and County of Honolulu.
Good evening. Okay, calling agenda item number twenty-three, LCV two three dash zero zero five nine Korea One Inc. Korea One Inc. Could you please state your name to the record?
My name is Nina Park, I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Yaki, Korea House in Park.
Mr. Jacobs, can you please read the charge?
On or about June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, licensee failed to make available for inspection and/or auditing within the city and county of Honolulu its books and records for the last four years, indicating all income, purchases, expenses, and employee time records of licensee's liquor business in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four sub D of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Excuse me, Ms. Park?
Yes.
Okay, so how would your mother like to plead? She can accept the charge and deny the charge, or plead no contest?
I'll accept the charge.
Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation for agenda item twenty-three?
This is licensee's second violation, the recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars. This violation occurred after a previous violation. The auditor's office conducted a follow-up audit in which the licensee was once again unable to produce its books to determine its gross liquor sales. The first violation was May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, where the licensee paid five hundred dollars. Again, this is the second violation, the recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms. Park, so this is the second time that this is happening. Have you or your mom figured out or decided a plan on how you're going to correct this situation? Because if the Commission comes again requesting this information and you can't prove it again or provide it again, this will be an additional, a third violation. And, you know, we do have, the rules do allow us to do, to suspend or revoke a license if you cannot provide documents, so have you folks figured out a process?
We started using a POS system, so everything should be easy to track with record.
Okay, so POS system, okay.
Ms. Park, the next set of books that you need to present is going to be June thirtieth, in just a few days of this year. So you're going to be prepared to?
Um, I am not sure, we need to get in touch with the attorney. Or I'm not sure what the steps are after, yeah.
Okay, so what Commissioner Hong is saying is, coming up, right, they could be requesting your books by the end of June to show again, right, so the question he's asking is, will you be prepared at that point?
Okay, I understand. We should be yes.
Okay, good, that was my question, I wanted to make sure that we won't see you here in like another place. Okay, good, thank you.
I was correct about what your question was.
Yeah.
I want to make sure, I don't want to speak for him, I want to make sure I'm correct, sorry. Okay, so it is going to cost us, because, you know, we're not able to provide it, so my motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-three.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars will be imposed for agenda item number twenty-three. Thank you very much. We hope your POS system settles it.
Yeah, one more, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, is it? Calling agenda item number twenty-four, LCV two three dash zero zero five five Korea One Inc. Could you please state your name again to the record?
Nina Park, speaking on behalf of Sun Park.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
On or about May tenth, twenty twenty-three, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to have an employee duly registered with the Liquor Commission as a manager or assistant manager of the premises on which he or she is employed, an active charge of licensed premises, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine sub A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ms. Park, you can accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest? Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation for agenda item number twenty-four?
This violation occurred on May tenth, when the liquor investigators arrived at the facility to issue the NOV in regards to the case we just heard, and at that time, they did not have a registered manager on duty. The investigative report notes that there's nineteen customers that were drinking alcohol at the time. This is a second violation for licensee, it's seven hundred and fifty dollar recommended fine. First violation was October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, in which the, they were reprimanded.
What was the figure again, I'm sorry?
The seven hundred and fifty dollars is the recommended fine.
So Ms. Park, what happened? There was no, there was no employee duty registered with us during the May tenth situation? Is there, okay, so I guess my better question would be, how many people are now registered as a manager with the Liquor Commission?
We currently have seven people.
Okay, so you currently have seven people. On May tenth, none of the seven people were working, or they were not registered yet?
They had, they were not registered, and we had one person who stepped off of premises for a moment.
So you stepped out of the premises for the moment, and then you folks now have seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
For that day, we only had that one person, and.
Okay.
Ms. Park, how long have you had this license?
Um, maybe a month or two now.
How long have you been operating the establishment? How many years?
How long have I been working at the restaurant?
How long has this restaurant been in existence?
For about twenty-plus years now.
Okay, so I guess my question is, how long, so the restaurant's been there for twenty years, have you had a liquor license for all of that time period?
I just started about two years ago, I've only had it for about two months, liquor license.
Oh, I think he meant for the establishment, not for you as an employee.
Um, for the establishment, I don't understand the question.
Okay, so your restaurant has been running for twenty years?
Yes.
Have you had a liquor license, or has your mom had a liquor license for the whole twenty years?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. 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 So it's very important to make sure, and you realize that now, because you've made seven people go to make sure there's a manager on duty, but you need to always have a manager in charge of the space, okay? I am looking back, I guess he said twenty eighteen, right, was their last or previous violation?
Correct.
I'm gonna make a motion for the fine to be five hundred dollars.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. A fine of five hundred dollars will be imposed for agenda item number twenty-four. Okay, thank you.
You're finished?
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, LCV two three dash zero zero six three W Steak Waikiki LLC DBA Wolfgang Steakhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, Kenneth Hu appearing for the licensee. At this time, we're waiving reading of the, of the charge, consent to the words and figures contained therein, and plead no contest. This is installation of a door without approval.
Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation for agenda item number twenty-five?
This is a first-time violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. Mr. Hu is correct, this involves installing a door into an extended area of the licensed premises.
My, my explanations, initially, when the licensee applied for the extension, he realized he needed to put a door in the existing premises to get into the extension, to do the renovations, so they subsequently, they put in that door. It wasn't shown on the floor plans for the extended area, and hence the violation. That's it?
Thank you for your explanation, Mr. Hu. Um, motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-six, LCV two three dash zero zero six seven Scratch Kitchen in Miri.
I represent to the Commission that Scratch is represented by Neil Goto, he's asked for a continuance until our next available date. I have no objection to his request for continuance.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number twenty-six is continued to the next available calendar date. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, LCV two three dash zero zero six one Pacific Ocean of Waiko, out limited.
As the record reflects, Wayne Luke is attorney and authorized agent for the licensee. We're waiving charges into a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, your recommendation for agenda item twenty-seven?
This is a first-time violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. The record appears to indicate that the license was transferred as of January tenth, twenty twenty, I apologize, I don't have my date, but the application was subsequently filed on February sixteenth.
Yes, that's an explanation, they did go through ESCO, and going through ESCO, the lease was assigned. The only saving grace is that they did not sell liquor until they got their temporary license.
And for the record, this was this year, I apologize for that.
Yes. Yeah, they did some, a lot of alterations.
So this, this, uh, this entity that's before, is that the transferor or the transferee?
What's that?
Is this the transferor or the transferee?
This is the transferor.
Transferor. So they're no longer in the premises?
And they served it on the transferee, you know, the authorized agent for both sides. Well, you know, for the transfer.
Okay. My motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, a fine of five hundred dollars being imposed for agenda item number twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, LCV two three dash zero zero six two Mexico Restaurant.
My name is Rosalyn Liu, I'm the authorized agent for Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please read the charge?
On or about February third, twenty twenty-three, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee made physical alterations within its licensed premises to wit installation of a kitchen door and decorative wall, removal of toilets and stalls, enlargement of a pass-through window, without prior written approval from the Liquor Commission, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-three dash sixty-two sub A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
I might say this, Ms. Liu? How do I pronounce your last name, I'm sorry?
Oh, Liu.
Liu, okay. Um, how would you like to plead? You can accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest?
We accept the charge.
Accept the charge? Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendation in agenda item twenty-eight?
This is a first-time violation, the recommended, recommended fine is five hundred dollars. I inform the Commission that this violation was discovered when the licensee investigative report visited the facility for a transfer application.
So Ms. Liu, any explanations?
What was the pandemic?
He was not aware, he was trying to fix things during the pandemic and did not get approval. We have since rectified the situation and everything has been approved, new plans have been submitted.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask a question. Were all the alterations made during the pandemic, or were some made after the pandemic ended?
During?
Yeah.
All during the pandemic?
Okay. Okay, my motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number twenty-eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, LCV two three dash zero zero six zero forty, carrots.
Mr. Chair, Commission Members, Kenneth Hu appearing for the licensee. At this time, we're waiving reading of the charge, consent to the words and figures contained therein, and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, your recommendation for number twenty-nine?
This is a first-time violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. This violation occurred when Bloomingdale's went from incorporated to LLC.
Mr. Hu, your explanations?
This is a conversion that was done nationwide for all of the stores, restaurants, and outlets that Bloomingdale's had at that time. There were so many stores and so many outlets to do, and unfortunately, Hawaii was forgotten.
So I have listed here that it was July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, is that when the transfer happened, or the changeover? Or is that when it was brought to, when you found out about it, not twenty twenty, it scares me, July twentieth, twenty twenty?
Well, I didn't find out about it until, um, I, we tried to renew the license, and we had a problem with that.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And then I, I realized that there were a series of changes made without getting the Commission's approval, which I think we cleared up by getting the conversion approved. But it was done obviously after the fact.
Okay.
Um, notwithstanding the conversion, were the same people that were fingerprinted in, in the background checks?
Yes.
Still the people that were operating there?
Yes, the same, same officers, directors stayed in place.
Okay. My motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty, LCV two three dash zero zero six six PS Associates LLC DBA Club Hot Ash.
I represent to the Commission that Attorney Keith Keichi represents Club Hot Ash, he's asked for a continuance, I have no objection.
Is it next available or?
Yes. Next available, I'm not sure if we have our Thursdays available right now because of, um, because of the lack of adjudication, so next available.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number thirty is continued to the next available calendar date. Calling agenda item number thirty-one, uh, LCV two three dash zero zero six five PC Associates LLC DBA Club Hot Ash.
Once again, Chair, Keith Keichi represents the licensees, asked for a continuance, I have no objection. Next available.
Agenda item number thirty-one is continued to the next available calendar date. Calling, uh, agenda item number thirty-two, LCV two three dash zero zero two eight Senia LLC.
Hi, Commissioners. Catherine Namora for Senia LLC, uh, will waive the reading of the charges and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the plea?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second in the objections reservations hearing seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacobs, what is your recommendations for agenda item number thirty-two?
This is licensee's first-time violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. This violation occurred when the licensee failed to provide its books and records for inspection for the last four years.
Ms. Namora, any explanations?
Absolutely, so the period in question for which we were audited was for, during the pandemic, the world was shut down. So the situation was, we pivoted to, what's the restaurant? Absolutely. So the period in question for which we were audited was for during the pandemic, the world was shut down. So the situation was we pivoted to, what's the restaurant closed to do takeaway. And so we've obviously, just in our struggle to survive, we're trying to reduce operating costs. So we switched our point-of-sale system. When we started our takeaway program, we ran that through our reservation system. And this was all in place before we were allowed to sell alcohol to go. And then once we were allowed to to sell alcohol to go, we started selling up through the same system, which was our reservation system called RESI. When we were audited, the we realized that the reporting through RESI wasn't really the best way. Um, we were able to provide reports, but it was essentially the reservation reports. So it had a lot of our clients and our guests' personal information. So we didn't hand it over. It had names and door numbers, license plate numbers for pickup. So we didn't hand that over to the commission when we were audited. When we reopened for dine-in service, we changed our point-of-sale system. So we're fully able to report everything that we sell, and we don't sell anything to go. But that was the situation. Uh, we were, when we went through the whole auditing, we were actually gave all the information that we had to the investigator. We thought everything was resolved until we received the violation in the middle of the service. We were a little taken aback by that, but.
So I guess my question is going to be, so the reso um, reso system you used, right?
Mm-hmm.
Was able to produce you a report, which I guess that report had a lot of personal information, so you didn't want to turn it over. Did it have the liquor sales and gross sales for that time period?
It didn't have it itemized. We were beta testing their new program to add items. So that's how we were selling any, like, the wine and the beer and the alcoholic offerings. Uh, so what we would do is we would pull it from the actual reservation, the items that people had purchased, add it to the reservation notes, and then that's, those reservation reports are what we would use to reconcile. Um, so it was, the RESI sys- system, since it is essentially a reservation system, not a point-of-sale system, wasn't really set up to report. When we let them know that we were being audited, we asked them if they were able to provide an itemized report, and they were not on their side. They've subsequently changed and resolved that issue, and they are able to report items now. But at that time, since we were beta testing that program for them, they didn't have that.
Okay, so my only question for that was whether you could or could not produce it at this point, right, for us to rectify?
Oh, it still would be.
Would it have like the cost or the, what your sales would be? That that's what it would be reporting, right? Would be reporting your gross liquor sales, right?
It would have to be still at this point, individual reservation reports for each day that we had our takeaway program. And from there, you'll see in the the notes, uh, it would be to, we sold them as boxes. So a box, you know, a one bottle of wine and two cocktails to go. So it would be in a note, but I don't know if they were at this point would be able to still pull it. It's since it was twenty-twenty, uh, probably not.
Okay, okay.
But we understand that you didn't produce that. What did you produce?
We produced, uh, so we had reopened for dine-in service as part of the the year that we were audited. So we provided those reports from April to June. And then what we did, I showed the investigator a copy of the report. I showed him how we we reconciled what we sold and explained the reasons why we didn't want to hand those over, since it had people's personal information. So we, we did the best that we could in protecting the people's privacy and showing how we came up with the bookkeeping side of it.
Okay. So I guess, I mean, I just want to make sure as we going, as we're going forward, right, because June is coming up, they may be auditing again. You're, you are able though then to pro- provide reports at that point for whatever there is.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we have been since April of twenty-twenty-one, yeah.
Going forward. Okay, okay. Okay, I got it, okay. All right, um, my motion is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty-two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second and the objections, reservations here and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number thirty-two.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty-three, LCV two-two dash zero-zero five-three, Shinsokei. Could you say your name?
My name is Helen Galmiche, G A L M I C H E, and I'm with Shinsokei.
Thank you. Uh, this has been continued to today's calendar hearing for a contested case. Are the parties ready to proceed with a contested case?
Commissioners, I'll represent that we did subpoena three witnesses for the purpose of this case. My intent was to offer investigator Jacob Fears and also allow the commission to question investigator William Walker and Catherine Fogtane in the event you felt it would be necessary or helpful to you. However, I learned early this morning that both Jacob Fears and William Walker are out sick, and they are unable to make it here. Because of that, I I do believe it would be helpful for the commission to hear the testimony of the witnesses rather than just get it from the reports. Um, I do believe that the licensee will be contesting the statements made by the licensee, and therefore I think it's appropriate for them to speak. However, I do feel there's sufficient evidence here if the commission wishes to proceed, but I'd ask that the city not be prejudiced by the fact that our investigators are are not here. In the event you all wanted to hear the commissioner, the investigators testify, then I think it would be more than appropriate to ask for a continuance for another date when we can come back in. However, if the commission decides this should go forward, then I will proceed with what I got. We can also have a discussion on whether we can stipulate to the facts as what happened that night and determine whether or not here, that stipulated facts, maybe it's just the 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 thought that she didn't commit a violation based on the facts that we can agree to stipulate to. So I'd be a little interested to hear from her, but again, my my official request is for a continuance in order for that you have the opportunity to listen to the investigators' testimony yourselves rather than just read the reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jacob. Uh, do you understand his request?
Yes.
Okay, are you ready to proceed with the contested case?
Hi.
Do you have witnesses that you have brought today? No witnesses?
No.
Did you have evidence that you uploaded?
No, just um, basically the statements made by the investigators is pretty much what I'm going on.
Okay.
So, um.
Are, were you, were you there that night of the?
Oh, yes, I was there. I was managing on duty.
Okay, so you yourself would be, is that correct?
Yes, I was managing on duty.
Okay.
So the reason I wanted to continue this without the three investigators is because um, I'm not really sure of the legal terms, but I always thought this was like a frivolous citation. And I say that because um, the liquor commissioners said that the fine that they gave me, the citation that they gave me stated that I failed to immediately um, prevent or suppress that altercation. And when they came in, I didn't even know liquor commissioners came in.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. We don't want to get too far into the argument pending on what we're going to do with Mr. Jacobs's request.
Okay. Oh.
So if I understand correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, you are prepared to continue with a contested case, and that is what you want to do. You would object to his request for a continuance, is that correct?
Um, I would rather not continue it. I've already waited fifteen months. I'm basically a calm person, but I've been having anxieties and um, there was a investigative report that I've never seen when I came to my first hearing in September of twenty-twenty-two. And two days before I was supposed to come to the May hearing, I found out there was an investigative report. So that's how it got extended to June twenty-ninth. So I read the report, and there were a lot of statements made that I thought was false. They're not here to say anything. Um, but based on what they did say, I wanna just express to you that I think this case should actually be dismissed.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Again, we're just, at the moment, we're only considering.
So you cannot dismiss the case then?
We're we're not gonna dismiss the case, no. Um, the question right now is whether we continue this evening, or we continue the matter and allow the witnesses to be available. That's that's what we're deciding at the moment.
Okay, I, well, I would like to continue it.
You would like to continue?
Now, I mean.
Oh, continue today?
Yeah, today.
Okay, okay. Um, commissioners, do you want to deliberate on that question, or do you have questions for either Mr. Jacob?
I I would like to cut, uh, deliberate.
Okay, okay. Well, we will deliberate on that request.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, we are back on the record. Thank you for giving us time to deliberate. Um, I think we have a few comments. As a general matter, we don't like to continue contested case hearings when they're scheduled, particularly when there's a party ready to go. Um, however, we have to balance that with the evidence that we have before us and and what that means for the case. In this case, it looks as though uh, the principal evidence is the testimony of one versus the testimony of another. Um, and I think it would be highly prejudicial if one of those parties wouldn't be permitted to have that testimony available. Um, so I would be inclined to continue this matter to the next available so that the commission has all of the evidence uh, that it requires to make uh, the the best decision the commission can make. Um, commissioners, any comments or type of action?
I have no comments, but I will make a motion um, that we um, accept uh, Mr. Jacobs's request to continue the matter until all parties can be there to provide testimony to the next available.
My second.
There's been a motion and a second and the objections, reservations here and seeing none.
So this just adds to what I think that this is.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, just just a second.
A civil case.
Sorry, let me finish my sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear that. Go ahead.
Hearing and seeing no objections, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Uh, this agenda item will be continued to the next available calendar date. Um, as stated, I understand you're ready, and we do empathize with that. If I was.
And three of the investigators are all sick?
Ma'am, 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 I, I know. Um, but that's the case. That case doesn't happen very often. I've never seen it. As a commissioner, I know I haven't been here too long, but I've never seen it.
And they let me go the night of, and they came back four days later to cite me.
Ma'am, ma'am, this matter is continued to the next available calendar date.
But that's not how the liquor commission works.
We are moving into other business.
Really?
Uh, calling agenda item number thirty-four, Liquor Commission Discussion Reselection of Liquor Control Administrator. Uh, this is a discussion that the commission had called regarding the candidates that we have available. Um, and what to do about it. They've been waiting. They've had applications in for the liquor administrator position for some months now. Uh, and um, we were ready to begin the interview stage, but
You know, I think this is really, they know what happened to me. I really do.
Given all of the circumstances.
And for you to just ignore me after fifteen months.
Excuse me, ma'am, we have continued the matter. You will have your chance to present your case. Thank you very much.
No, I did not have my chance to give it my case.
Uh, you still will, thank you.
I'm gonna have to wait another six months, probably.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Oh, you, you're not thanking me.
So what to do about these three candidates? Um, one has officially, I think officially withdrawn, I'm not sure, but he has been at least considered for the.
Right, he is not, he is not formally withdrawn, but his uh, the the same name has gone forward for as a commissioner appointee. So the assumption is, is that he would at some point, yeah.
You can't do both.
Can't do any, you can't do both.
Or you could ask.
Jess, you wanna do both?
So the way I see this, we could either, we we don't have much time um, before uh, I leave for um, international travels, and then Commissioner Hong is gone directly thereafter. And by the time Commissioner Hong comes back, we should hopefully be at a commission of of five. Um, and I think at that point, we'd be in a better, more appropriate position to hire administrator. Of course, prior to that, there's no practical chance we're going to hire administrator. Um, so the question, I suppose, would be, do we move forward with the three interviews um, just to show those candidates that we are moving forward and we're trying to keep this moving forward, um, and then essentially um, take a break until the full commission uh, is 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 seated? Or do we simply say, we're very close to the commission being seated, um, let's postpone until that date to um, evaluate the three candidates and move forward from there?
Well, my view is I, I'm not against having more commissioners here to make the decision, but I am at a point where we have, I think we've had these four individuals, well, now it's down to three, waiting for quite a long time to hear at least what our plan is, because we may go back to them, and they may come back and say, well, sorry, you took too long. I've already applied somewhere else, right? So I do think we should at least determine if, so I I know that there's two meetings in July that are not gonna happen, but I know, and I know there's possible meetings in August that may not happen, right, because you, Commissioner Hong is not here. But I do believe we should at least give them some type of timeline to understand, hey, if you're still interested, we wanna start looking at scheduling or ideas of scheduling, um, I mean, interview processes, right? Whether or not, what that'll be, right? I mean, now, I know Commissioner Hong has not had the chance to interview them, but he, based off the information, we did get information, so he was able to review some of that, right? I don't know if we wanna talk about setting up something in one of the meetings in August, when you're available, to possibly at least interview something, or tell them, let's have a discussion with them. I don't know. Because if you think about the guys, its names have dropped. Are they going to be in by August?
I'm open to.
They're supposed to be seated in time for the August tenth meeting. That's what I was told.
Good.
Yeah.
August tenth. So the available dates, when you three are available, I'm, and I'm gonna discourage saying, let's not do it on August, I mean, July sixth, but July thirteenth, and then a long break, uh, I guess August, August third.
Yeah.
There's three, and then August thirty-one with everybody.
Yeah.
But you know, I mean, I mean, I think we should at least give them some type of timeline. And then whether they wanna recount from applying or not, that's up to them. But right now, it's almost like we have not had any real follow-up with them in regards to putting out the email, or putting out the notice, getting back applicants, and then that's it, right?
No, I did contact them by email and say, uh, a confirmed receipt that I completed my MQ review, the list has gone forward that I was awaiting instruction. So everyone said, thank you for saying.
When, when was that?
Uh, it was, okay, so I, the, the recruitment closed May fifteenth. I completed my review May nineteenth. It was maybe within, it was before, um, it was within the next two weeks, I think. It was in May, in the month of May, uh, May or early June. I just said, just wanted to let you know, I have your, actually, when I received their stuff, I said, it confirmed I received your application and attachments. And then when I knew that we were not going to take action immediately, I just said, just letting you know, um, I'm still awaiting instruction from the commission. And they said, thank you for letting me know.
You know, I don't know, if I was one of the applicants, I don't know how much it would make as a practical matter, whether we conduct interviews, you know, second week of July or, you know, first week of September, um, is it a month and a half or so? I don't know how much that would affect someone.
I mean.
Maybe it could, but I I don't know.
I'm not, I'm more not about, I mean, like, when we do it, but I would like to at least figure out a date that we wanna say we wanna do it. And then, you know, at least contact them and let them know, this is what we're looking at, um, this, this, and this, right, versus leaving them to some degree. That that, I mean, I'm I'm not, because for me, I have no issue if we were to say August thirty-first, but at least we can let them know, hey, we're looking at August thirty-first as being an interview day or something like that, and we'll have a full commission, whatever it is, but keeping them up
Mm-hmm.
updated.
Yeah, I think regardless of what position we take, we should be updating them on that position. So I I definitely agree with that. So. Is there a a preference one way or the other over interviews within the next two weeks or interviews in September?
I'm more inclined to try to do it earlier so that, you know, on the chance that even if we defer it, um, while we're gone, other interviews can go on without us being here, and then we can make a decision. That's also another possibility. Do we have to?
Okay, so he's what you're saying. He's talking about us three doing an interview, right, and then at that point, right, if the two, unless I'm not understanding, the two additional commissioners
Yeah, no, you're understanding, yeah, yeah.
come on, s- do like another interview with the newer commissioners, almost like a
Two-step.
Two-step type interviews.
Because they can also do those independently without a flow, if it's just the two of them, right?
Yeah. Well, we can do it with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I I I think, you know, what it could, what we could achieve if we did the interviews earlier is to, a few different scenarios. One would say, all three of them are terrible. We might as well wait and start over, right?
It's like a. Your for Roger, right?
And I think if the, if we unanimously thought that, then there's no way any of them would be appointed anyway. We could also say, all three are incredible. Let's do a second round with all of them with a full
Yeah.
full commission. Or we could say one or two of them should be thrown out. And again, with the majority here anyway, if we really truly didn't think a particular candidate would be qualified, then we could at least narrow it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also the the process for us conducting interviews is not that smooth, so us having one more round of practice at it might.
True, and I think we felt like we could have used a little bit more of the first time around.
Yeah, definitely.
So.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just interrupt here. If I can make a a procedural suggestion. Uh, and I'm taking a, I'm suggesting if you do decide to do these interviews in July and actually even for the later ones, is that we'll, on that particular date, we'll have again two, two agendas. There'll be the regular agenda, which is, you know, blah, blah, blah. And then there'll be a special meeting where where you conduct, and that one, because it's a separate agenda and you'll have to check on this. I think we can do that by Zoom. And it's because one of the candidates is in British Columbia, or Vancouver or whatever.
Well, I mean, if we we could do an executive session on the thirteenth of July, as long as the interviews were done prior to that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, assuming what, I would need to post this Friday for July to do interviews on July, unless we, well.
I mean, I I probably would suggest, and this is my opinion, if we're gonna do something, do something like on the thirteenth where we have a Zoom thing, then we all have a little bit of time, because you're not, you know, to let that stuff steep or whatever. And then the third, you could do an executive session if we were to determine moving people, ranking that, right?
That's true. They're not seated anymore.
Unless you do a, I mean, a special meeting on another date that's not a Thursday, which uh, if it's a separate day, I don't think there's an issue where where that one would have to, if you wanna do all three of you interviewing the same person at once, someone is definitely in like British Columbia ones, and actually, no one lives on on Oahu. Where you could do that by Zoom, it would be a a public meeting, however, but unlikely that, I mean, maybe people will listen in, but unlikely that there's gonna be testimony. And then I would just, I just need to be cognizant of when we post for that special meeting, when you're going to do those interviews.
Yeah, and if I can clarify, at least for myself, I'm not expecting us to do any more than basically what we did last time, a closed door interview
Do that make sense?
under executive session or whatever we called it. I'm I'm not gonna bring them, I don't think, this is my interpretation, bring them before the commission in a public hearing prior to all five being seated.
I I guess the the question is how to to conduct, to have all three of you interviewing someone at once, and I don't think I can keep it in exact.
We had talked about doing similar to what we had done last time.
Oh, two and two?
Well.
Or two and one, or.
Not not the other, one of those two will be lonely.
Or 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 we just do one, one, one.
Yeah. Four, one, one, one.
Yeah.
Uh, if there's three candidates, maybe we can just do that.
Yeah, we just do a rotation of it, we're one, one, one.
Oh, actually, that, I mean, if you just did the one, I don't, I mean, we, we wouldn't have to schedule anything.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And then we could, then we could schedule an executive session on the thirteenth, we just talk about it.
On the thirteenth, okay, yeah.
Or like you said, on the third.
I like that one.
Yeah.
Well, how?
Or we do, yeah, or we do something on, you know, an executive session on the thirteenth and schedule something on the third to talk about it once everybody's steeped. I I I'm just more worried about getting everything set up by the six, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I don't think so. I I think the the approach of having each of us separately in a room like we did last time with interviews to to start the process. Um, schedule that when we can schedule it. And then if we have time, if those are completed and we have time for by January, or not January, but July thirteenth to call an executive session on the agenda, just to talk about it, then we will. And if we don't, we can just call that on the third.
Okay.
And then we've at least had the chance to talk an executive session about the three candidates and what we think and should we drop one or do we like them all, whatever the case may be. And then we're prepared to, when Commissioner Hong comes back, have the full, present our recommendations for the three candidates to the full commission and be able to have a determination with the full commission on what we want to do. Uh, whether it's conduct secondary interviews or open it up to a recruiter or whatever the case may be.
So are, is it your intention so there'll be three candidates and three, and you're gonna each interview each candidate individually?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
And is the preference is in person or are you willing to do it by, by Zoom?
Well, I mean, I I don't, I don't care. I mean, obviously for candidates, they might prefer in person and they have a bit of a strategic advantage, but that's not up to me.
Well, one guy you're gonna have to.
I don't mind if they do Zoom.
Yeah, I mean.
One of them has to anyway, correct?
Pardon me?
One of them would have to anyway, correct?
Yes.
Uh huh.
Yeah, so I think if one has to do it, we should make it available to everyone.
Yeah.
Um.
But it's, I'm fine with in person or Zoom, whichever they as a candidate determine. But I think Zoom should be offered to everybody if we're going to have to do it for one anyway.
Yep, agreed. So maybe we can start there and see if there's a collective, you know, hour or however much time we would need that all three candidates would be available. That's how this works, right, is to be able to switch Zooms.
Cause then we just rotate through one, one, one for, you know, half an hour.
Mm hmm.
Okay, I'm set, like, candidate A is in a room and candidate B is in another room and candidate C is virtually present on Zoom.
In Zoom. Yeah.
And you just rotate.
Yeah.
Commissioners.
Kind of like speed dating.
Yeah.
Yep.
Except not speedy, okay?
Yeah.
I think probably the conservative way to do this would be to presume that our executive session to talk about the interviews would be August third. That would give us maximum flexibility between now and my departure to schedule the interviews.
Yeah, it would be tight, I mean, cause we would have to like, because next week is already, you know, next week, we're we're down on a Tuesday
We have holiday.
and then the following week is already the thirteenth and that was, that's kind of, that may be kind of a challenge.
Right. Right. So probably practically speaking, the interviews may end up occurring that week anyway.
The week of the thir- uh, the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if that happens, then we have time, we have time schedule, so, yeah.
August thirty, very, very, okay, got it.
We are on the third, yeah.
Okay.
So I guess what we can do, what we'll do, I I can do is contact the the candidates and indicate the commission's desire to conduct one-on-one interviews. Give them a range and maybe do almost like a doodle kind of, you know, one guy is obviously can do it by by Zoom, but a a doodle kind of survey and then show that to you and then you can say what what works for you guys, right?
Yep.
No.
Oh, boy.
Right.
Okay, that's the plan.
Baby steps forward.
So.
Yeah, cause if we give twenty minutes per candidate and we're just running around rooms, we can basically have everything done in an hour.
Okay, so I mean, I'll start, I'll I'll aim at this week, the week of July tenth to July fourteenth. Except maybe not do anything on the thirteenth, cause the.
We have a calendar, sure.
Yeah.
Uh?
Cause we have a calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll I'll aim them at that, at that thing, okay, that week rather.
Cause I'm assuming the the guy that's gonna be via Zoom is probably gonna look at some time between ten, eleven, twelveish being their regional time, right? Cause it's gonna be way later, earlier.
Where where are they in Canada?
Three, three, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
West side, west, west coast?
I thought he said Vancouver. I I haven't looked, I just don't recall.
Yeah, Vancouver's just three hours, so you gotta look at like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he could just slightly make himself available. I'm sorry, I mean.
I mean, he's better than Montreal.
Yeah, that would be like five hours, six hours.
You gotta be working Hawaii time.
Okay, so, so that's why I'll, tomorrow I'll contact them and get them to indicate their availability, offer both in person and or Zoom. Okay?
That's good.
And then we'll go from there. Then after I get those dates, give them to you and you indicate, then we'll set those interviews, okay?
Okay, great. Any other comments on this discussion? Awesome. Uh, okay, so calling agenda item number thirty five, liquor administrator, administrative matters, Mr. I.
I I don't have anything in addition to what I reported earlier today. Okay.
Great. Uh, any other comments? Okay, we are adjourned.